Right, present, Rick. John, here, Sarah.
Here.
With allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Need a motion for the consent agenda. Move. Got a motion, you have a second?
Second.
All favor.
I agree.
Public input is time in place for discussion items already on the agenda with a time limit of three minutes each. Discussion possible action in reference to Halloween Town Street closures. Three.
Yep, so this is just our event that we do, well, we haven't done in a few years, but our event we normally do every year, Halloween Town. We usually try to start setting up around noon, on the, which would be the thirty-first Monday this year. The event's from five to seven, but we try to close down Main Street from Jackson to Walnut, but not the intersection, so we won't shut down the intersection because trucks gotta come in and get to Lloyd and stuff like that. We will end up shutting that down around like four o'clock, the intersection at all. So noon for everything but the intersection down on Main Street, and then the intersection at four o'clock.
You're gonna shut all the way down to Wal- or Walnut then?
Correct. Is that Walnut right? The first, that's Walnut.
Yeah.
Was that the thirty-first? That's the thirty-first, yeah.
Any other problem with that?
Um, just contact the businesses that are, do you contact any businesses?
Have not, no, but we'll make them aware of that.
Just, yeah, if you could, I don't think the, I don't think there'd be any open except the insurance office.
Yeah, that'll be open.
Insurance office in Lowerous.
Yeah, Harris Lawn.
Yeah.
Couple Harris Lawn.
Does she open on Mondays?
She don't open Mondays.
Does she open on Mondays?
North side of the road is not, south side is. On Monday.
Do we, do we put up tip rate, you know, parking signs or anything like that?
We just usually put the roadblocks up, not the blocks, but just road signs from the city shop on each end, and then have some there for the intersection to where we're ready to close that down.
Make a motion to re-allow the street to be closed from Jackson to Walnut.
Got a motion, second, all favor.
Aye.
Discussion possible action in reference to Halloween tree, or tree times.
This is just a, it's, in the past, we put this on the council agendas. Halloween Town runs from five to seven, usually that wraps up, and then let people go out and about until about eight o'clock. Obviously, there's really no hard and fast rule on this, but it's just kind of a recommendation that we suggest that all porch lights be out by eight o'clock, just to curb anything that could happen.
I move to approve.
Second.
Motion, second, all favor.
Aye.
Discussion possible action in reference to joint meeting of the Lisbon School Board.
Yeah, so I was contacted by Autopino, the new superintendent. They suggested November second or November thirtieth, which are both these days. It's our turn to host the meeting. If either of those work for you, if not, we can shoot for a different night. You'd like, I can throw some dates back to her.
If you're up for it.
November second and November thirtieth.
Either one works for me.
Let's get it done on November, okay, sorry, most, if it wants to know then.
We're changing.
Sell on the November thirtieth, by your tone.
You have a lot of it this year.
I'm gonna love it too.
Make a motion for that date, then we'll get the, if you guys have any items that you'd like to discuss, obviously, we'll share the agenda, but if there's something that you have questions on, everybody that's here for the last one, I believe.
So that'll be for seven o'clock, or?
Yeah, I believe so, yeah, seven.
Need a motion for that?
Motion to make the Lisbon and School Board meeting, it's eleven, eleven to at seven o'clock.
Got a motion, go second.
Second.
All favor.
Aye.
And that's here.
Aye.
Public hearing on ordinance update to chapter one sixty-one, rental inspections. Need a motion to go to public hearing. Salute. Motion to go second.
Second.
All favor.
Aye. Aye.
Close.
Anything, sir? Copy of the ordinance was put into your packet. Basically, what we did was with the twenty-eight E, condensed everything down. I went over this, the county went over it, I did have Christine look at it as well. Everything seems to be in here, what we need is just tailored towards that twenty-eight E. You'll notice one sixty-one oh six, the fees, we kinda did this before. This will be done by resolution. It does have a section in here, but it just says it's gonna be done by resolution, so then every time we go to change that or they up their fees, we don't have to come back and do a three reading of ordinance change. I will be meeting with Lynn County to get those fees, and then we'll probably have a resolution coming up, I would assume, next meeting on the new fees.
That's pretty much it, I don't think you have questions or anything? Any questions? Motion go to public hearing. Salute. Motion to go.
Second.
All favor.
Aye.
Close. First reading of ordinance oh six, twenty twenty-two, update to chapter one sixty-one, rental inspection. Inspections, possible suspension of rules, place of ordinance on third and final reading.
Motion to approve the first reading.
Got a motion to go second.
Second.
Nate.
Aye.
Mike.
Aye.
Rick.
John.
Aye.
Aye.
Motion for possible suspension of rules, replaced on third and final reading.
You know, we sometimes don't like doing it, but with this, I don't think anything's gonna change 'cause following the twenty-eight E, it's just condensing what we have into what they have, so it's up to you what you wanna do there. Put it on there as an option.
You haven't had anything from landlords?
No, I had no comment references. Like I said, it's the same ordinance, it's just tailored to meet we're the twenty-eight E. The only thing I think that's gonna be of significance is gonna be the, um, the fees, if that's.
Considering we've received a few letters, the last time some inspections were scheduled or took place or something like that, landlords have a statement, that's why they need an opportunity to speak if they want to, so I hate to.
Want to come down the sun?
Yeah, I hate to sneak through and just pass this third reading right now, so, nope, not for me.
But I have a motion.
No.
Motion failed by the motion. Approve resolution twenty-six, twenty twenty-two for urban renewal annual appropriation. Christine.
So this is the money that we give out in our tip rebate. The only one that we have on the next upcoming fiscal year is for busting investments, which is the budget lines. So brothers has been removed off of it, so it's decreased about twenty thousand dollars. And it's just a, it's just a requirement that we're, that we have to do for this.
I have a motion.
Second.
You gotta do the first first.
Motion.
Move.
Second, I make a motion. Now you can say.
Aye.
Aye.
Rick.
Aye.
John.
Aye.
Sarah.
Aye. Yeah, I've never done this before.
Sound alike to me.
Approve resolution twenty-seven, twenty twenty-two, property lien for rental inspection fees.
If you look at the resolution, you'll see the address that is pertaining to you, this gentleman, I've spoken to him on the phone, sent him two letters, and he has had ample time, in fact, he's had over the thirty days of the first letter to pay it, and we've still received no funds, so I'm gonna move forward and put it in towards the property taxes.
So, motion.
I'll make a motion.
Got a motion to go second.
Second.
Nate.
Aye.
Mike.
Aye.
Rick.
Aye.
John.
Aye.
Sarah.
Aye.
Correspondents. You know, I need to call you today. City engineer, David.
To divide an update on the well project and maybe get some direction from council as part of the potential site that we look at. Due to some concerns with site separation requirements, the generator has to be two hundred feet from the well. We've moved the generator away, but we also wanted to have a storage building on there to be able to have more action equipment for maintaining that prairie area.
So this is the well generator?
Yeah, this is for the well and generator, the engine building, we'll do this later. And if you look past the first page, the second page is the floor layout for this building.
This is the well building?
This is the well building, so the well is located out further, it was put to the last page, and that would be the site layout, that's an area line. And that shows you the well's out in that prairie.
Okay.
And then the building would be up near the barns, right across from the care center, with the ironed metals. And there was some concern about that being on the National Register of Historic Places. So we wanted to make sure that if we put this here, it comes off an existing grass driveway, we would pave that, and then have a two, two parking stall space there that you could pull in and use that as a turnaround and for chemical delivery and whatnot. The building would be in the outline that you see there. That's about a hundred thirty feet away from either of the barns that are there now, so there's pretty good separation. And if you go a page before that, there's a rendering, and we looked at using materials that would look pretty similar. We could do a metal roof and make that a white roof if we wanted to, and that's the barn, but we tried to get some exterior panels that looked a lot like what you have on the barn, so that it would look like it belonged in that campus. So if this is something that they feel would be acceptable in that location, that shortened the driveway considerably, gets it out away from that area that they wanted to have the natural space. Talking with Travis, we could disguise that well, but out there, it's only about an eighteen inch diameter, pipe at six, about three feet off the ground, with a little top on it. We've seen some communities that put some sort of a cover, they could disguise it with a rock, a couple of the rocks located while we were doing the sports complex out there, around that, and make it a little spot with a bench or something to that effect, so when you have a walking trail that goes around this, that would be our access to that for the well rig, but under most conditions, it would just look like a grass and no path. We're trying to be sensitive to the area, keep it looking like we intended it, the overall parks plan, and put this building in a location that it doesn't really stick out, and it also provides the building distortion maintenance equipment in it on the other side, so.
Turnaround function is.
We're just welling, okay, there's a whole well up there. Yeah, it's up in the grass area, towards north end of that pond.
I did speak to some members of the historic preservation. I have the map here. This building will be just outside of that historic district. So I'll actually look at that if we can do. As long as we keep it outside of there, they just asked that we be in communication with them as to exactly what we're gonna do, and I promised we would. They all probably have an opinion on the building as well, but just for your guys' peace of mind, there's no, from what they know, there's no regulations or anything that we'd have to follow and remove those barns from the historic places if we put a driveway in that area. So, like I said, the building will be outside of that district, it'll be just outside, but we'll make sure what it is.
If we run into any issues with that, we can put a driveway in further north, as I mentioned. This is just a curb cut at this point, and it's grass from the back of the curb to the barns. So if we wanted to go a little further north, do a curb cut, put a driveway out there to get outside of the district, it becomes an issue, we have the ability to do that and not really ship the site plant too much. We were just trying to make use of the existing and then put a paved driveway back into that barn and so that the historic district areas, that we had a little bit better access there. Do a purposeful well building on that.
And then also with the building, obviously with the sports complex, we're gonna need to be mowing and doing things out there before we have the concession stand or the maintenance building out there. So this building would have a separate area outside of the wellhouse that we can store some of that equipment there. Once we get the concession stand and the equipment shipped built over the complex, we thought that would be, that would be, this room would be utilized for all the water main supplies and materials and build for water main grid.
But that storage room that's listed would be the parking rec use until then?
Until then, yeah.
Okay.
Travis, I don't know if you have any other thoughts with this?
No, it's pretty much, we'll be, right now, we got parts and pieces all over. So if we need certain fittings, we go to one shop, if we need different ones, we go to another. Hope is, once the concession stand's built out there, we'll have one central location.
Does that change, does that thinking change the driveway location at all, or?
No, I think.
I mean, you want it back, I mean, is this, this isn't going directly into the garage door, is it? This driveway, or?
Yeah.
If you look at this floor plan, it's pretty easy to switch that walk-in door to the same side as the garage door, basically hold to that.
Driveway.
Trying to put that around the corner to discourage people from trying to get in there.
Okay, and where's the generator intended to be?
Generator will be on the back.
Office side of the garage door?
Yeah, on the back side of the building.
Okay.
Any questions?
We're working on the, a lot of my funders have been working on it for quite some time. Have that probably to a point where I can give you an overview of what we're doing on that.
You gonna plant a little tree in there, Joe?
You put a lot of trees in your pictures, so now you commit it.
That's, uh, the trees are already there, they're just, uh, family grown-up, yet respected.
Any questions for Dave?
No.
Thank you, sir.
Good, Dave, thank you.
Public works. We're going to try to get started on painting some of the mandatory lines, going down the center lines and that this week, weather permitting, get that wrapped up. We did around the leaves, started today. So hopefully we get some rain, so that job's a little more tolerable, with everything being so dry. It's kinda, kinda dusty to see. Other than that, that's, that's pretty much where we're at. In winter, I talk to Drayton and see if we can get stuff shut down before next week because of the temperatures.
Any questions, Travis?
Our garage pickup, November's the last one, is that right?
I mean, if we see piles.
What did, what did we ever decide about the trees downtown? Thought we're taking them all out.
Oh, the ones on the south side?
Oh, we're right over taking out all the trees that are on the sidewalks.
Would you, just those, the berries?
Yeah, the berry trees are taken out. We got the, I got data before, we got the planners in, but obviously, it's not that near to, like, these, but, you know, we're down at the shop.
Yeah, there's one dead one down there, but if we take it out, then electrical out there is gonna be a tripping hazard if we, I mean, put that tree in there.
Any others, Andy? Please, bourbon.
Person, Rick.
Person, Rick.
We are wrapping up soccer, we're playing football this week, everything has gone great. We will be moving into basketball, girls' basketball at the end of the month, and then boys' basketball will follow after that, as we get closer to winter. And lastly, I wanna thank Travis and the guys for anything like helping bring the bigger goals down to the park. Rodman paints my lines for soccer once a week, which is a huge help, saves a lot of money. Everything that really they do to kinda help me out, things that I can't really handle on my own, so that's all I've got.
And again, to Drayton. Please, bourbon.
Uh, just a couple of things, we are preparing with the, to move forward with the building renovations over at our new site, so you'll be seeing some of that, most likely in the sun coming up. Hoping to get that opened up for a winter project and have it completed, so renovating that sanctuary portion. And the other thing I've been working on, I'm excited to introduce council to Bob Russ, you probably all know him, being that he's from the area and everything from that standpoint, but over the last couple of years, I've been working on officer wellness and programs to assist officers in critical stress debriefings. Just maintaining their, you know, decreasing their stress levels and things through the work that we put them through and the encounters that they see. And so we began a, been working for a couple of years on a police chaplaincy program, and that led into conversations between Bob and I, knowing his background as a chaplain for Jones Regional and other experiences through that, and then an opportunity for some training that we, we were able to ship him down to Florida, he was already there, so it didn't cost us too much, for some training to become certified as a police chaplain, which was great from our standpoint. So he is already in, in knee-deep and riding with the officers, getting to know them a little bit, building relationships there, and then build relationships in the community with representing the police department as well, just to promote wellness and make sure everything's good, and let Bob kinda cover a little bit wherever he wants.
I hear you've covered most of it. I've been volunteering as a chaplain since about twenty thirteen, so I've been doing this for a while. I support the Lisbon Fire Department, going to Regional, as well as St. Luke's, and, and also been supporting the critical incident stress debriefs after the killings up in the prison. I went through the International Crisis Incident Management Program, went through some EMS chaplain training, and as Doug said, this last year, I went down, I was down in Florida and had an opportunity to spend four and a half days in, in a chaplaincy program specific for law enforcement, so I'm really excited about this, this opportunity as well.
Yeah, it's been a great addition, like I said, it's, we've been able to fund it, he makes a whole dollar a year just so he's covered on insurance from our standpoint, it's more.
He took ninety-three cents on deductions, I don't know what that was.
That's the gun.
Seven, no, seven cents in taxes and ninety-three cents in deductions, so.
It's, it's a great addition, it's even, even more remarkable that a department our size, and we're just blessed to, the community that we work in and the services that we provide, we got a tremendous resource right here that we're gonna capitalize on as much as we can, so.
Welcome aboard.
Yeah, welcome, and we're lucky to have you.
Absolutely.
Any questions for Felder?
That's it?
That's it. Thanks.
Uh, that was Director. Jake submitted the reports for July and August, you'll see those in the packet. Just one thing to note, there are a twenty-nine percent increase in call volume from last year for that month, so. Lots going on, and again, I can't thank their services enough. Not, not many missed calls, if any at all, so kudos to Jake and his staff. Fire chief. This week, we're doing fire prevention over at the school. That started today with the third grade and poster contests. We had several firefighters go over and introduce themselves and talk fire prevention with third grade. And then Thursday and Friday, there'll be classes that'll come down here periodically through the day, learning about fire prevention and fire safety, so I need to give a shout out to Dale Happel, he's the training and prevention captain. He does, done this for a long time, and does outstanding work with that, so if you see Dale, thank him 'cause it's a, it's a pretty cool process that the programming runs. Travis and I met with the ISO folks, and this is our insurance rating. It's never a fun meeting, just 'cause there's a lot of things that we have to do. Thanks to Travis and his staff, they have to go out and run hydrants and get different flow rates and tests and different things like that, so there's preparation that goes into it. It's my goal right now, we're sitting at a rating of a four rating through insurance. Obviously, the lower the number, the better your insurance rate is through the community. So four is about as low as we can get for the size of the city we have and the, and the water and the trucks and all that stuff, so. One thing I am trying to improve on is outside of the city limits, within the five mile buffer. We do the auto wave with Mount Vernon, so we're gonna try to improve that rating and get it down to a six, which would save boot-to-money for people that are outside of the city limits up to the five mile mark, so. We'll see how that goes, but they're gonna send us some addresses that we're gonna have to, we have to do a bunch of training and a bunch of testing, timing of how, how long it takes our trucks to dump, how long it takes to drive from point A to point B at so many mile an hour, it's gotta be videoed, and it's, it's a long process, but everybody's willing to step up and help out with it, so we'll see how it goes, and I'll report back later with that. That's all I have, fire related. Got any questions for him?
City manager.
So Saturday at ten thirty, as a part of the grant we received for the trees, the Drayshow trees, there'll be some planning going, volunteer planning going on over at the Myers Farmstead. So Tree Board, we'll have a couple of city staff there, and the Girl Scout troops are gonna be over there to assist with that. I think they're putting six trees, planting six trees over there, so that's again Saturday at ten thirty. We have a meeting this week with Dave Schmidt and the engineers out at the sports complex to go over some items out there. I don't know if you've been out there, they seeded last week, pretty much on the downhill slide here. There's some more grading a little bit that we're gonna have them do, but for the most part, they should be wrapping up here shortly with that first section, so. Met with Curtis last week, out at the barns, if you get time to go out there, he's done a significant work to that lead tube. He actually got that kind of app looking like it should. I know the city crew, they hauled in thirteen little bearings, I believe, to frame that up and change the water path. There was a lot of water that was just running through the property, and then it runs through that lead tube, and that wasn't helping matters, so hopefully we got that resolved. So he's got some more work to do in there, he's thinking about two weeks there in the lead tube, and then he's also kinda moving to the other side as he goes, but he thinks it won't be too long they'll have that middle barn wrapped up, so. Been helping Drayton with the five oh four, this is the nonprofit for Parks Direct, kinda talked about that before. Some people call it five oh one C three, this is a five oh four, this would be exactly the same as what the fire department is, should the association. Going with that then would be down the road, we're looking to have, potentially with your approval, if they ever wanted to have alcohol back at the park, this would be a good, good thing for Park and Rec as a fundraiser, they could get a grand shot in their association name. Also, there's some great opportunities that strictly are for nonprofits that are outside of the government. So there's a lot of good things with that, so I've been helping Drayton with that. I would expect probably the, the next meeting or the following one, we should have a final resolution for that. Also, Drayton's gonna be working with the Tree Board for the Destination Iowa. It's gonna be for the nature park, since the sports complex has already started, we're not eligible for that portion, so they're gonna be working with the Tree Board, Park and Rec will be working with the Tree Board for that. I sent you guys an email reference, Homeland Security's training for that PIO class. It's Public Information Officer, that's gonna be in Decora. I'm gonna plan to attend that, I think it'd be good to have somebody within the city that's PIO trained. I don't know, Doug, Chief Chin, do you have any that are?
No.
So I'm gonna attend that, I don't know if you are as well, or anybody, but.
Haven't seen that one, but I'll talk to you tomorrow.
I think it's November third, so I didn't get any pushback, so I'm hoping that's a go from everybody. I received some emails and calls that they wanted me to, so that's kinda the plan there. I think that is it. Any questions?
We, are we, are we filling the pump over there?
Yeah. Travis, you can fill it.
Right now, the pump we have in there is a larger pump than the return rate back on the well. So we start it every morning and shut it off every night, gives a chance to re-energize the water level throughout the night so it can run roughly, what do we, I'd say like fifty, two thousand gallons it can run in twenty-four hours. We ran it the whole time, so we got, obviously, it's dry, so we're maintaining now. We gained a lot, and then we had, we had to figure out the best way to run the pump, and then now, now that we got it, we're, we're at the maintain level, so hopefully after fall rains and stuff, next year, we'll, we'll have figured out where we keep it all in the whole time.
Any questions?
But now in the wintertime, you'd, uh.
Yeah. Yeah, we're probably getting pretty close to being done with next week's temperatures.
Oh, we probably have snow.
Any questions?
Okay, we'll add to the, we did the, the mowing out on Highway thirty and retention pond, so if you guys.
Looks great.
Is he mowing up?
Does he mow up here too? Yeah, he kind of just goes everywhere, but... And battle with our 2080 with Lynn County, some of that is our responsibility, like the edges, but... He went... But he did everything that best, yeah.
Yeah, we're technically supposed to mow up to Maine where it meets.
According to 2080. Down Maine according to 2080, and then make mow our portions, so... But I thought it looked really good, and it just kind of cleans things up. That's what's so nice. Anything else?
Council, who's your name?
I have a couple of friends from work that recently bought the house in 219 East Maine. They're concerned about trees and turkey vultures. I don't know what, too new about it, or if children breach the subject that... I think they would like them removed, but that's going to be a touchy subject down there. Other than that, I have nothing else.
Are they the city trees?
Yeah. Then they're big ones.
We'll take a look at them and see what...
I would...
Particularly...
Come up with a way to get rid of the turkey vulture.
Yeah, because that's really, I think, the primary concern is there's...
That's a beautiful street there.
Birds scat everywhere underneath. That's where they would park their cars.
I got you.
They aren't closed on the house yet, but they're going to be moving in. They expressed that concern.
You'll see on the sidewalk, Lily's walking path every week, every day.
All right, we'll check it out.
You could shovel it sometimes.
Come in.
That's it, yeah.
Mike?
I have one.
Rick? John?
Southeastland is in great need of drivers to deliver meals on wheels, which usually takes place between 11:00 and 12:00 o'clock, Monday through Fridays. Thanks to everybody that's involved, we're scouting for food. In Southeastland, they've seen the sharpest increase year to year for food pantry assistance. Also, we're going to have a trunk and treat at the rec center over in Mount Vernon on Sunday, the 23rd, at 2:00 to 4:00. So that's something else for the kids. I think Police Department is going to be involved, plus the Wellness Coalition. Turkey vultures, I think they've been there for decades. They keep coming back, so I don't know how you... Off DNR, I guess.
Yeah, I think what I think Rob said earlier, but...
That's all I have.
Sure.
I just wanted to give a shout out to the Parks and Rec board in Drayton and their families. A couple Sundays ago, I saw them all decorating downtown for Halloween. So thank you to all of them who helped. Thank you, Drayton, because we're out there as well. Welcome, Bob. We're excited to have you and lucky to have you. And then obviously, once again, thank you to all of our city workers and office staff and everyone else who do what they do.
I don't have anything. You see, you got anything?
I attended the Iowa League of Cities Conference, so we can have to go in Water Blue. It had amazing training courses and updates along with networking with other staff across Iowa. The conference will be in Cedar Rapids next year. If anyone is interested in attending, it is open to city staff, council members, and mayors. As many of you know, I do serve on the Bennett Council. And while I was at the conference, I did receive my certified elected municipal official certificate. If any of you guys want to obtain that, I can help you and let you know how to do that. I know Sarah's taken some of the classes for that, to work towards it. Part of the conference, I submitted my name for the Rhonda Wood Smith Award. The award is presented to outstanding young officials who show innovation, commitment, bold leadership, and sacrifice in community service. I was selected for that award. I did receive that while I was up there. And then I was also voted on to the Iowa League of Cities Executive Board. So I'll be serving on that board for the next two years. So keep myself busy, so...
So we are in presence of near royalty. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Anything, thank you for Christina. All right, possible closed session pursuant to Iowa Code 21, 5J. Must stay possible sale of realistic property. Motion to go into closed session. Motion second, all in favor?